All right, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the USD 431 School Board. Everybody present, Jessica Bays is present via telephone. Looks like we do have one addition to the agenda and that will be under opportunity for visitors will do the audit. So I move to adopt the agenda as modified.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Strategic planning review.
I'll be sending this to you individually as board members. I just have had the myself and the administrative team, some of the questions were about what are some things that we are doing that's actually meeting our strategic plan. And so month of February, just some highlights of regional professional development at Lyons, attending the career fair at FHSU, notifying parents of upcoming events, as well as Junior Cardinal Parent Club Meeting, resilience training, sit meetings, interviewed candidates for open band and art positions, looked at possible professional development opportunities, being more diligent and consistent with the responsibility with the emails and posting social media platform, as well as working to build care portal, advertising for Roosevelt Positions, staff evaluations completed. So several items and all, again, I did not post this tonight, but I will get this posted for you to see the items that have been taken care of, working towards meeting those goals in our strategic plan.
Moving on, item five, opportunity for visitors. Mr. Ball? Give you five minutes and just remember students and employees will not be presented during this portion of the meeting.
Okay, my name, my name is Bruce Ball. I live at 272 West Cheyenne in Hoysonen. I'm married to Christina Ball, that's the current band director. And I originally wanted to be placed on the agenda and I called Mr. Crowdis when I found out that I wasn't on the agenda. I'd filled out all the appropriate paperwork and he said he has nothing to do with setting the agenda. Okay, so I'd like to approach the direction that the band is going. As you know, Mr. Crowdis gave Christina a letter of non-renewal on November 17th, on the Friday prior to Thanksgiving for poor evaluations. Christina wanted clarifications on these poor evaluations. Mr. Crowdis stated, no one will discuss it with you. If you resign, we won't say anything. I call that poor leadership. I started thinking of other possible reasons why he's getting rid of her. The teachers had to fill out a health questionnaire, probably contrary to Hippard. And maybe he saw that I had a cancer diagnosis. Or maybe it's because she belongs to the conservative teachers union. I told her, I said, well, you know, if they do fire you, then you can complete your advanced education and do what you enjoy in the past where you directed 75-plus voice choirs of adult choirs. You directed orchestras with full bands. And you know what she told me? She told me, I'm really enjoying band, sharing the gift of music with my students and pouring into them positive character traits of compassion, kindness, honesty, humility, self-confidence. As you know, there's always two sides to every story. And I'd like to share some hindrances concerning the band program. In the 22-23 previous school year, Mr. Brungart wouldn't allow students with poor grades to go to band. As you know, lots of times kids that are gifted in the artsy subjects sometimes struggle academically in other areas. And we lost seven band students to poor grades. This year, the administration have other classes that are competing with band. We have fundamentals of math, we have fundamentals of reading, we have career and life planning, career and life sciences. When Mrs. Reinhardt was there, a principal, she understood that in order to have a successful band program down the road, you had to encourage kids in that direction. You couldn't have other classes that compete with that. If they had like a study hall, she would say, well, we don't want you just talking with your kids and goofing around. Let's try to stay with band. She would encourage them in that direction. And then on top of all this, they decided to open up seventh and eighth grade band to any person that wants to play band. Yeah, we're trying to increase numbers, that's great, but you're dumping in kids that have never played an instrument, don't even know how to hold an instrument, in with kids that are on the third and fourth year of plane. That's kind of like saying, well, we want to have more kids in Algebra II, so let's take some seventh graders and we're going to plug them in Algebra II. Yeah, you could do it, but at least they don't make noise. Band, it's really difficult to do that. When Christina had some concerns of the direction that the band was going and not getting support from Mr. Brungart, I suggested that she share with Mr. Crowdis. His response was, Christina, that is between you and your principal. For example, we have to get the seventh and eighth graders to march and practice marching with the high school for the Labor Day Parade. Makes sense. So she goes to Mr. Brungart and says, hey, we need to do this. And he said, well, the only way we're going to be able to do this is if you contact all those teachers that this is going to affect and get their okay, then we might be able to give you 15 minutes. But you can't drive over there, unload your instruments, march, load back on the bus and get back in 15 minutes. So you just have to march in the parade with no practice, no nothing, you just march. You as the school board members have to ask the hard questions and not just rubber stamp what the administration recommend days recommends. Communication on all levels is the key. Mr. Crowdis sent an email to Christina on February the 12th concerning this non-renewal that he had originally given her back on November 17th. He stated in the email, looking forward to meeting with you. I'm thinking, great, finally, we're going to get some answers. The meeting consisted of him saying, I don't have to give you a reason, you're not a licensed teacher. But I'll tell them the story. Christina's had several band members that mentors that she's met with countless, countless times. One of these guys has 30-plus years of experience and she reaches out to him all the time. In fact, she'll take instruments over to him, he'll fix them for free, do all the sorts of stuff. She has a doctorate in music that she reaches out to to get suggestions of how to do this. She's been very involved with her band students for these last three years. She's taken classes to the rest home to play before the residents. She's taken classes to play Christmas music down at Town and Country. She's taken the fifth through the 12th grade to honor band, sixth grade students. She asked them this year, she goes, what did you learn? Said, well, learned some new music, but it was way too easy. She's taken band marches at the state fair. She's taken students to the league competition. She's taken students to the regional competition. Matter of fact, this, this last year, she took students to the state music competition and walked away with 14 medals at the state music festival competition. I think that success speaks for itself. The suggestions I have for you guys is don't have classes in direct competition with the band. If you want to have a successful program down the road, you can't be pulling all these students away in that direction. You have to have the administration encourage all grades to continue in that band. You as a school board members have to ask the hard questions. Example of this is in track, I know this has nothing to do with band, but we spent thousands of dollars on a new facility and we have shot put rings where we're throwing towards each other or facing each other. We have long jump runways that don't even have toe boards in them. I've never been to a meet that doesn't have toe boards in them. We have discus rings where you probably launch the discus over the fence. I'm getting back onto it. I encourage all you board members to listen to the fifth and sixth grade band members and compare them across the state with other fifth and sixth grade members and you will realize how advanced these students are. We have 31 students in fifth grade, we have 19 students in sixth grade. It's going to take at least two more years to be able to get some of these kids up to high school to have a productive band. But the administration has to figure out a way to get them there. And if you do open up beginning students to a class, you have to keep it separate. You can't dump them into kids that have three and four years. In closing, Mrs. Callan has verbalized Christina on numerous occasions. Christina, you're too nice. If this is where this musical journey ends for Christina at Hoysonen High School, I think that's a pretty good note to go out on, you're too nice. Thank you.
Do you have a copy of the audit extra table?
I am Danielle Hollingshett, I'm the principal on the job. For those of you that haven't heard me talk before, and then Delaney Smith is the in charge on the job. So she's here with me today as well, in case there's any questions that she can help me out with. I go through this fast, I know I do, and I know you're seeing this for the first time. So after you have a chance to take a look at this later, feel free to contact me, they have my information. So I'll go ahead and get started with the audit report, the bound copy. And this is as of 6:30, so I'm not going to dive into the numbers too much just because you've seen a lot of years since then. But we will go through some of the findings that we had. On page one, two, and three, one, two, three, and four, this is our independent auditor's report. And at the very beginning of the, the letter, we give you an adverse opinion on generally accepted accounting principles and that's because you waive GAAP and you follow regulatory basis of accounting instead, which is K-MAG. And so the third paragraph down is where we're giving you an unmodified opinion on that regulatory basis of accounting. And in that opinion, we believe that these financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. Then we go into the responsibilities of management to prepare the financials and then what we do as the auditors. And I would just encourage you to read through that. We also, because you spent over 750,000 in federal expenditures, we had to do a single audit as well. So that's at the end of this report and we'll go through that as well. On page five, this is a financial statement that we're issuing that opinion on. And at the end of the year, you had an unencumbered cash balance of 2,484,000. This is a decrease of about 1.5 million from the prior year. But if you go through the funds, you will see that you had 899,000 to be reimbursed with federal funds. So you had encumbered those funds for projects that you were doing, you just hadn't received that money yet. The next several pages are the notes to the financial statements. K-MAG only had one change to the accounting policies that we have to now include. We're supposed to include multi-year agreements. So if you sign into a software agreement for multiple years, one, you have to make sure that you have the non-appropriation clause in there allowing you to do that, but then we also have to show it on your long-term debt schedule now. So that's a new requirement. And then on page 10, we also have to look at several pages of Kansas statute requirements and compliance. We did have two compliance findings this year. The first one is the district is required to notify the state 20 days prior to bond, when the bond payments are due, letting them know that they have the money basically. And they did not meet that 20-day requirement. So the state lets us know if they're in violation of that. And then the second one is there is a requirement for all school districts, anything over 20,000 must be gone out for bid. We had two of them that we found that didn't meet that bid requirement. So that's a statute violation as well. If you then turn over to page 14, this is a long-term debt schedule. And at the end of June 30, you had 14,250,000 on your debt schedule. But I wanted to just point out that the turf and track lease, while you signed it, you hadn't received the money yet. So it's, it's a little skewed because that's not on there yet. But we did make a note just to let readers know that you have signed that agreement. You just hadn't received the money at the end of the year, there's a timing, timing difference there. On page 15, this is our summary of expenditures to the actual budget and we did not have any budget violations. And then the next several pages are the individual funds and a comparison to the budget as well as to actual. And I'm not going to go through each of those funds unless you have a specific question or something you want me to point out. Instead, I'm going to have you turn on over to page 42. And this is where we start the single audit and this is for your federal funds. And the first report is the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting. So this is any findings that we had over the financial statements themselves. And we did have three material weaknesses this year that are noted on page 42. And then if you turn to page 50 is where we actually talk about those. But before we flip over there on page 44, this is the independent auditor's report on compliance over the major program that we tested. This year, we tested food service and we had one finding on the food service noted as a material weakness as well. And that's also on page 51. On page 47, this is the schedule of the federal expenditures that you had for the year. And you can see the food program, we tested 433,724 of those expenditures, which is about half. Flip on over to page 50, these are where the findings are noted. I'm going to kind of go through these fast, I'll just give you the, the real quick summary. The first one is segregation of duties. While you guys probably are close to having enough staff to meet the segregation with the changeover that you have had over the last several years, it's hard to meet that. So this will continue to be that until you get some good procedures and controls in place with the staffing that you have. The second one, this is in regard, in regards to the bank reconciliations. As I, I'm sure you are very aware, they, while some of the bank reconciliations were completed, they were completed incorrectly. They weren't done right. So we had to go in for the audit and we had to actually re-reconcile from September on. And so just making sure that those are done timely, that they're reviewed correctly, that the person reviewing them understands them and making sure there's, that there's some good controls there so your financial statements are accurate, that you're making your decisions on. The third finding is in regards to internal controls around encumbrances. Anything that you as the board approve in the minutes, any contracts that are signed or entered into during the year, they have to be encumbered in the year that you do that. There are some exceptions for school districts, but any construction, anything of that nature has to be in the year that you sign it. So just watching those at the end of the year especially and making sure that they get put in the right year. And then the last one is for the finding on the, the federal program and this is on the food service. And this is around procurement, suspension and debarment. And this is in kind of the same thing as that statute violation earlier. It exceeded the $20,000 limit of going out for bid and there were no bids done on it. And it was a special circumstance, they ended up ordering two pieces of equipment, so it ended up totaling over the 20,000, but still making sure that they get those, those bids. And then in the letter, there should be one tucked in the back, I think. This is Patrick and whoever else helped him. They have to go in and they have to provide action taken on these findings. We then have to submit this to the federal audit clearinghouse. They will review it and make sure that they agree with the findings and as, and the action that will be taken. So that is in there for you, they write that letter. There should also be a governance letter that was tucked into the beginning of the report. This is just to let you know of the difficulties encountered during performing the audit. We didn't have any disagreements with management. I think you're all aware of the struggles we had, which is why we're, we're just now delivering it. But we got there. And so there are a few things here in the letter that we have some recommendations for. The first, and they start on the third page. The first one is, this one's been on there for a few years now, getting some written procedures and instructions. Because there is such changeover here, it would be really helpful for those new people coming in to have something to try to follow. The second one is making sure credit card statements are not being paid until, well, you kind of have to pay them, but there needs to be more accountability and making sure that receipts are being received. There was, of the one that we pulled, the month we pulled, we are missing 18 of the 43. So there is definitely a control break there and so we want to get that resolved. The activity funds, the, the bank reconciliations were one, one problem of it, but then also just making sure there's some sort of policy consistently being followed, whether it's two signatures, three signatures, whatever it needs to be, the checks aren't being done the same way. So whatever the board wants there, making sure there is a policy written for that. Some of the journal entries that we had to do that were material were for, it wasn't necessarily in the wrong fund. It's just they were, they were netting receipts and the state doesn't like that. They like to see the full state aid that's received, they don't want things going netted against it. So making sure that they're accounting for things in the correct account line. And then adjusting journal entries, any entries that are made, they need to have a preparer and then a reviewer sign off and document and making sure that whoever's reviewing those or is truly understanding what those journal entries are doing. And then the last one, the federal programs, and you will see it on page five of the audit report, some of them have positive cash balances, but they're reimbursement based, meaning you can't pull them down until you've spent them. So just watching that closer because it, when they see these reports, they're not going to like that. They don't want to see that you're pulling money before you spent it. So watching that closer. That is a really quick recap, I'm sorry, I know I blew through it. Any questions for me?
Thank you for all your help.
These ladies are excellent. So I know there's been a lot this year and so, but they, they've helped us a tremendous amount.
Hopefully, hoping for some consistency and
Right.
Training, training will go. Yes, yes, change, change is hard, always is, so. We did, did you get a, the rest, yes, perfect. We have to get this submitted by March 31st.
Who needs to sign this?
Typically, it's just you.
Oh, okay.
And actually a board member usually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Typically, we'll do a motion to accept the audit report. You want that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to accept the audit report as presented. Been moved in second at all in favor?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. All right, we'll move on to item six, the consent agenda. Got your minutes from 2:5 and 2:19, special meeting on there, the check journal and cash balance report. Does anyone have any questions? I may have to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes seven zero, that was for the consent agenda, in case you couldn't hear that. All right. Okay. Move on to item seven, the business fundraising policy.
I sent out a draft of the fundraising policy with the original agenda this afternoon. After, after receiving some more information from KSB, I, I resent out a new draft. So if you haven't taken a look at that recently, it did go ahead and add a couple terminology. Having the Acacia-sponsored activities and athletics will be allowed one fundraiser per calendar year as well as conflict of interest, just bringing that policy into compliance with the policy that we would be approving, which is the GAG, which keeps district employees from profiteering from individual fundraisers within the, within the school policy. And then I did upgrade the, update the fundraising approval form. So the major change that was made was kind of taken out, the idea that needing to be some sort of good or service. From the, from the feedback that I received from the board, they were okay with that as long as we were, you know, giving the opportunity for there to be different values to be able to, to be able to use. It didn't have to be a good or service. So kind of took some of those items out of there. So questions, concerns, comments?
Before, were there, did it state two fundraisers per calendar year, what was the frequency before?
So the, the original frequency was one per calendar year for athletics and activities that are Acacia-sponsored. And for other activities or sponsorships, there was one per quarter. And from feedback from, from staff and administration, they said that the original policy that we can't find is, was
On the fundraising approval form, in addition to the building administrator and the superintendent, it would be good to have the contact person for the group as well.
Yeah, I mean, that could be added to the top. Typically, that's, they put their information in up above in number two groups or groups involved, but I can add that name.
Yeah, I think that would be good, just that there's a designated point person for the records.
Yep.
You didn't have to go back and look who was in charge of. Since we just were listening to auditors. I move to approve the fundraising policy as presented.
Second.
Been moved and approved. Moved and seconded to approve the fundraising policy as presented. All in favor?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
All right.
All right, where do we have now? Bus replacement in progress.
Just giving you some information, Nickerson had their buses here. I got some information from them, their buses were 2007s versus our 2002s. Both of their buses had over 100 and, or 540,000 miles on it. They paid 175,000 each for their two buses out of Coach Masters, turning Nebraska, which is where we take ours to get them serviced. So, so that, that's just kind of a comparison in terms of what we're looking at versus what we have. I also have another contact that I haven't, that I I also have another contact that I haven't, that I have made, but don't have any numbers on for Midwest Bus. So obviously, this will be a formal bid process, but that's kind of, I mean, if we're going to go ahead and replace bus three, that's kind of what we're looking at is a bus that's old, less expensive with a lot of miles on it, if that's the direction that we go. So I will give another option whenever it comes time for that. But just wanted to give you an update on those items as well.
Anybody have any questions? Move on to item C, SDAC and USD four thirty-one virtual program partnership.
Do you want to talk about that anymore? Any more information or any questions?
We brought it up last month. Do you guys have any questions or on that program?
Remember I talked about, we have the Academy in Great Bend through SDAC where we send kids for online classes that aren't successful in our traditional setting. This is a second program through SDAC where it's done virtually at home, online. They do have personnel that meets with the kids daily on Zoom. So it's not just like a K-12 program where they're on their own, going online. So did talk about it last month, and I would recommend that we approve this for services for next year.
Do the students that go through this program, do they graduate with our students as well and walk?
They don't walk.
They don't?
Well, through the academy, they don't walk. They have their own program or their own ceremony where they walk there. That's not, that's something we just need to kind of work through, I guess, as a district. Do we allow those kids to walk with our kids or not? But they would get the exact same diploma, high school diploma from Hoysington, yes.
So they would meet all the state requirements?
Yes, meet all the state requirements and then our additional requirements on top of what the state is, yes. Yeah. And again, with the funding, remember when we see kids to the Academy in Great Bend, we end up paying the hundred percent FTE funding the following year for those students. With this program, it's a sixty-forty, so we pay them sixty percent and we keep forty percent of the FTE funding.
So would there still be scenarios, Joel, where we would have to send a kid to the academy?
Absolutely. Yeah, yes. I think both options.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And then again, if we have a move-in or if a kid just has some health issues or something comes up later in the year, they would then, they could take the kid and they would charge us by quarter. I can't remember, it was a hundred and some odd bucks per quarter, something like that, so. Cost-wise, this would be cheaper than trying to start our own online facility and trying to go virtual on your own is really tough to do. This is something SDAC's done now for a couple of years and quite a bit of schools have gone to it and have had success.
Supply the equipment, like the computers?
They actually, they actually supply their own.
Yeah.
It could go both ways, but they actually have their own laptops to provide. But we could if we had to. They also come to our campus to assess, to give the state assessments to our students. So like I said, they're pretty evolved. It's not just an online curriculum that they're on their own.
So they have certain timelines and stuff that they have to follow to get work done too? They don't just
Correct.
Say here, this needs to be done?
Yes, correct, yeah, yeah.
Is there a regular reporting structure from the academy to you or the virtual students?
Yes, yeah. They monitor the progress and everything and they report to us, just like the Great Bend Academy does. Like I said, if we've spent a dozen kids to the academy, all but two graduated and most of those graduated early. So it's very beneficial.
Any other questions? I move to approve the partnership between SDAC and USD four thirty-one for a virtual program as presented.
Second.
Been moved in seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Thank you, Joel.
Yes.
Okay. Press box update?
So about a month ago, Barts Construction reached out to me and showed a lot of interest in working on some projects with us. And so we met with them basically the next day and talked to them about the press box as well as some issues we were having at Lincoln. So I actually, Jeremy Barts is here with us tonight. I did go ahead and give you an update on the Lincoln construction that we plan on working on over spring break. But he's also here to talk about option one and option two with the press box modifications as well, so.
All right. Like Patrick said, my name's Jeremy Barts. Give you a little background on myself. So hesitant saying this in this setting, but I'm actually from Larnet originally. My dad had a plumbing and HVAC business, did a lot of work in Great Bend and Barton County for about twenty-five years. Kind of always knew I wanted to be in construction, so I went to Fort Hayes for construction science. And then I worked for McCown Gordon for four and a half years, mostly in the K-12 market and then a little bit of healthcare. Spent a little time in Nebraska after that, doing some projects for University of Nebraska on some athletic stuff, was part of the football complex up there. So some pretty cool projects. Ultimately, wanted to get back closer to home. And so coming up on two years ago, I started Barts Construction with the idea of being based in Great Bend and working a sixty-mile radius focused on K-12 and healthcare. So that's kind of how I got to be sitting in front of you guys. We've been pretty fortunate. A lot of people have bought into that idea from the employee standpoint. And so we've added some people that are from here that have some pretty good project experience, so. That being said, kind of want to touch base on the water intrusion stuff over at Lincoln. So long story short, we did a water test a week ago today, actually. And we kind of had a few areas that were suspect, and so we were going to start with those first. After thirty minutes, we did not have any water show up on the inside of the building. And essentially what we're doing is we're standing there with a water hose, trying to soak everything. Talking with Patrick and Tyler, the water intrusion was typically only occurring after a really heavy rain. And so we did our water test and found that after an hour and ten minutes, water appeared inside. There's three things that we believe to be the contributing factors to this. The first one is there's areas of the sidewalk that you either have zero slope or negative slope, meaning that the concrete is sloped towards the building. That's never a good situation. You obviously want it to slope away. The second thing is, and there was a detail from the original contract drawings floating around, there's a hydrofolic water stop, which is intended to go between the building and the sidewalk, and that prevents that water from getting underneath your precast panels. We don't believe that that's installed. We got the architect involved. This is actually the first time they've heard of this issue. We've done quite a few projects with them. They're really great to work with. So they went back and reviewed project photos and project logs. And unfortunately, there's not much to pull from there, and so that was kind of a dead end. The third contributing factor is if you look at the expansion joint and the caulking that goes between that sidewalk and the precast panel, your expansion joint is actually supposed to be cut down a quarter to a half inch below the top of your sidewalk. And in this case, it's the highest that we measured is three-quarters of an inch above. And they just caulked on the top of it. And so it's a poor install on your expansion. So that's your three contributing factors. Talking with Patrick, we have a fix. We're going to start on Friday on removing that sidewalk and put it back the right way. So it'll be done by the end of spring break. So is there any questions on that before we jump into the press box?
This has been an issue basically since the beginning. If you remember prior to me coming, they moved the bleachers that set up against that west wall out of way and actually had to replace some of the floor. And then Brentwood Builders was sent by, I believe, Knapp Holtz to actually put a ringlet or a metal, a metal piece
Metal flashing.
A metal flashing, thank you, up against that wall, which not only, not only does it look bad, it's not structurally fixing anything. So, you know, what we've been impressed with, with Jeremy and his crew is that they went back to the architect and they've been here, they've been on site, they've been, you know, shooting level to see what is actually going on and trying to figure out the fix instead of just, instead of just coming in and saying, "Well, you know, we don't know what's going on." So, you know, we believe, you know, that they can come back in and fix this. Because every time we have a rain or a snow, you know, Tyler and Sonny, both see water back there. So we feel like that this is something that we need to address.
What avenues are there to recoup some of that money? Since they did a poor job on doing it, they should be able to get some money back.
And I mean, I would have to do some investigation into that, but probably none. I mean, we're four years out from any warranty that would have been there from the original manufacturer and or installer. I mean, you know, we obviously can pursue legal action, but I'm not sure exactly what our avenues are, but I can investigate that.
And I kind of want to jump in there and tie into what Patrick was saying. The last thing that we want to do is put a Band-Aid on this. We're putting our name on it. It's got to work in order to stand behind it, so, on record.
You said it was Brentwood who eventually did it?
Well, the original contractor was Knapp Holtz. I don't know who their, I don't know who their subcontractor was, but Knapp Holtz was contracted to come back out and put what was put in there. But they're not the original.
You said Brentwood came in?
They came and put a Band-Aid on it. But they were, they were not the original install.
So it's all going to concrete, so that's correct?
Mostly speaking, yeah. We'll get on the water intrusion? Okay. So the other project Patrick had us look at was the press box. And so originally, the intent was to add a second story to that and then kind of fix up some of the stuff on the inside cosmetically and end up with a really nice press box. So diving into that, you'll see that there's two options or two proposals that we put together. One of those is to add that second story. The other one is kind of a scaled back version. So the one to add the second story, you're looking at about ninety thousand dollars. A lot of your driving factors on your cost there is access. So that second level of that press box is extremely high from the, be the north side right there off K-four. And so we would have to get equipment out here for extended period of time in order to reach that. And then when you flip around to the south side, where the bleachers are, there's really no good way to access that, and so that involves scaffolding. So access is probably your biggest factor in driving those costs. Your other factor that you're running into is it slows us down drastically because there's no good way to get material in and out once the second story would be sheeted. So means and methods changes quite a bit there, just due to no door. The only way to access it is a window off of the south side or through your roof hatch. So talking with Patrick, we kind of figured that one might be a little much to bite off from the sound of things. So that's where we came up with option two. Basically, option two is taking what you have right now, still doing your cosmetic upgrades on the inside. So you guys can read through that. I won't necessarily read through all that. But it does include new cosmetics on the inside, new windows. And these windows are aluminum and they slide up. And so you don't have to deal with looking through the glass. So say, two people are sitting next to each other and you have a window that slides this way. One of you has a clear field of view, the other one's looking through two panes now. The other thing we didn't want is one that cranks out, because now when they're on the fifty, it's great. When you're about to score a touchdown, it's not. So these windows would slide up. You should have great clear field of view. And then the other thing we talked about doing was wrapping the existing press box as it is in metal panels. We had talked about the possibility of the metal panels themselves being white with a red trim, excuse me, would really pop. And so the last thing that Patrick and I talked about was the possibility of taking the roof now, where you have your guard rail, and expanding that. And so that's also included on there as well. So tried to give two different options. You know, one of them's a sizable commitment. The other one, we tried to scale it down as best we could, so.
This original idea came from the Blake Harris Memorial Fund, donated right around thirteen thousand dollars towards, you know, updates and upgrades to the, to the press box. I did talk to Addie Baird just today. She understands. She never, never in her wildest dreams did she imagine that it would be as expensive it is. But she also, you know, was in agreement with the, with the ideas and changes that we were wanting to make to the press box to make it, to make it more usable. And we've talked administratively that, you know, ideally, we need more space, especially playoff time. Maybe in the future, we may look at something, but just right now, cost prohibitive to do so. Obviously, knowing that, you know, the district would potentially be on the hook for about thirty thousand, thirty-three thousand dollars, which would be capital outlay funds. You know, that's why this is being brought to you. So obviously, if you need, you know, some time to process this one, because, you know, we did get these numbers just today and we were able to get them to you, you know, that's why we wanted Bart or Jeremy to be here and talk and kind of give you a rundown of what it is, so. So feel free to ask him questions or if you have questions, me.
So does this include or could it include a railing around the top, the roof part of that? Because the small area that they have right now for the camera, we've seen them move over onto that roof.
Stepping outside of it.
And it's, to me, it's just not safe. But if we could maybe even put a railing up around it, at least that has some protection there.
Yeah, so that does include removing the guard rail that's there and then installing a powder-coated guard rail that would enlarge that space. It's kind of difficult to explain without standing there looking at it, but you have some speakers at the corner of your press box roof right now. And so what our intent was is to step back one window width, essentially. And so you have five total windows and that guard rail would be between the outside two windows, if that makes sense.
To about more than double that space.
It would actually triple it.
Triple it, okay.
It would triple your square footage. Because currently, it's about eight foot by eight foot and it would be twenty-four foot approximately. Because it currently, it's about eight foot by eight foot and it would be twenty-four foot a- approximately.
Have you gotten any input to, uh, from the, like, coaches and, you know, whoever else that uses the?
Minimal, minimal input, um, because just, just not having all of the, the ideas of whether or not it was gonna be. You know, two stories or one story or, so now that we have kind of an idea of, of a direction that financially we might be able to go. Um, get some more input from them.
And on that too, um, as far as gathering additional input or, you know, weighing your options here. Um, I talked with Patrick and if we could start construction prior to July one, this would be ready for, uh, this fall's football season. So it, it's not like, you know, sitting here, you guys need to make decisions that would impact this fall. Um, ideally what this, uh, me coming here tonight was like, hey, you know, this is what you're looking at. And so then we can evaluate from there, so.
I would, I would like to consider these two separately, just considering we could tap, one is below the audit threshold and one is above the audit threshold. So since we just had a finding on that, um, knowing that we wanna start over spring break with the one that is under audit threshold.
Right, and the, and the idea of this is, is informational because the, the one above the audit threshold. Um, I have, I have been in contact with four separate companies. And Bart's construction is the only bid that I actually have.
Is there, and I should have asked this question of Adams, um, and Brown, is there a sole source justification document that we can fill out? To go in with our audit to say we solicited so many different.
So typically, typically I will provide, on, on these types of projects that I only get one bid. Um, I will provide any of the email documentation that I've had with any of the companies that I've been in contact with. And, um, you know, provide with them with as much information as I possibly can to, to tell them. I've reached out, I've talked to multiple companies and, and have only received one bid.
But that doesn't, the, there's no standardized sole source specification that me, would result in us not having a material weakness.
Correct, correct.
The, the second piece that if I may is listing it in a newspaper. And this has been listed in the Great Bend Tribune on two separate occasions, so that is also satisfied.
Not that I've, I've not happy with the puzzle, just.
Well, I, I don't wanna end up in hot water either, so, we're all in the same picture.
So, um, I'll gather some more information and then maybe at the April board meeting.
From the front, but if you're, do you need a motion for the Lincoln Construction to start it over spring break? That one's good to go.
That one's good to go, yeah, the board has given me, um, authority up to twenty thousand.
Yeah, uh, I did wanna add one other thing, um, so we're, like I said, we're based in Great Bend. And I think a lot of what my job is, is kinda being an ambassador for construction. Um, there's a lot of opportunities that kinda fly under the radar, whether that's you wanna live in Hoiston from Kansas and work on. Uh, construction projects, or if you wanna go and build high rises in Houston. So, or anywhere in between. And so if you guys have any students that are interested in construction or aren't sure what they wanna do after graduation or are looking for a summertime job. I'd love to talk to them, um, I love building stuff, I love this industry, and I think a lot of that stuff flies under the radar. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there, so.
Appreciate everybody's time. Thank you, Jeremy. You guys leaving? Man.
Mallory, your mom and dad said you have to stay for the whole meeting.
Hey, guys.
The last group that was here stayed for the entire meeting.
All right, well, that cleared out quickly.
Yeah, it did.
We will move on to item eight, new business, a rebid food service.
So, th- this does, I thought this actually needed to be done, and I'm glad it doesn't because it is quite the process. So I do want you to be aware that this will be a process that will start in the fall. Uh, and we'll rebid, um, with OPA as well as others that we might be able to, um, you know, reach out to. So, um, you know, just, that's a process, um, it's a packet about, um, a, an inch thick. Um, uh, KSDE will be assisting us, uh, on that process as well. And, uh, so that'll be something to look forward to in the fall.
Item B, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar.
So I provided you with both drafts one and two, um, and the information, uh, provided to you as well. Uh, draft one, uh, one out, we, we voted over a, about a month period of time. Had fifty staff members, and this goes out to the sixty certified staff members. Um, had fifty staff members vote in draft one, won sixty-six percent of the vote. Uh, so the recommended, um, uh, motion would be to go ahead and approve draft one for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, the major change from last year's calendar is that parent teacher conferences. Would have been on Halloween. And, um, specifically our elementary site council was, was asked about that. And they said, please don't put parent teacher conferences on Halloween. So the calendar that was approved, parent teacher conferences were moved to Tuesday of the same week. Um, and we will be taking off the Friday after Halloween, which teachers are excited about. And then, um, option two was to move parent teacher conferences to the Thursday of the week previous. Um, and then they would have to wait a week for, um, the, um, for the day, for the, for the day to make up for that. So, um, all of this was brought to calendar committee. Calendar committee created the option one, option two, and then was sent out to the staff for vote, so. Questions on that?
I move to approve option one, calendar for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It's been moved in second at all, in favor?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, item C, non-resident enrollment procedures and capacity.
So I will, I will attempt to keep this as brief as possible. Um, the, the next few months will, um, the administrative team. Um, with input from teachers will be in the process of, um, creating numbers. That, um, represent the size of classes that we would like to have. Um, you know, district wide, K through twelve, this specifically addresses K through twelve. And then the I, then we will take a look at how many numbers we actually have and what the difference would be. So creating that capacity. And then at the April board meeting and, and as we create those or as we, um, um, look at those numbers. I will be sending you updates throughout the, for, throughout the weeks, um, to be able to keep you informed as to where we're at on that. Um, then at the April board meeting, because it is April and May first, we have to have our capacity numbers published. Um, so administration will look at class numbers and determine the numbers for classes for twenty-four, twenty-five. And numbers we deem appropriate for those numbers in the classes. Present the non-resident student enrollment capacity numbers at the April first board meeting. Post-capacity numbers at the district application and the district application on the district website no later than May first. I feel like it would be appropriate to publicize in the Great Bend Post, Great Bend Tribune, as well as our normal site. Website, as well as social media website. Then, coming up, June first through June thirtieth. We will accept non-resident applications. And that is different from, I mean, that, that fills the policy that we approved back in November. Uh, A, B, C, C. Um, because the, the dates are the main thing that we cannot, uh, change. Then July one, after all of the applications have been turned in, uh, July one, we will determine. Any grade level that has more applicants than capacity. So that's really all that we're, we're taking a look at July one. If, if we say that we only have three capacity in third grade. And we have five applications from out of district students, that's when we would then go to a lottery for that specific grade level. Now, there are a couple of factors such as, um, if that student, um, has an employee in the district. If the student is military, if the student, uh, not the student military, but the parents are military. Um, or if the student has siblings already in the district. So there are a few things that might bump that student into, um, not having to go through the lottery. Does that make sense? So if.
Can you run through that exclusion of military, a sibling in the district?
Um, or, or if the employee, if they're, if they're a sub, or if they're a student of an employee in the district. So there's a couple of them, yeah, a couple of them will automatically qualify them, a couple of them will give them priority. So if it's, if it's a child of a employee, that student is automatically in. If it's a, if it's a sibling, then that gives them higher priority over somebody that's not a sibling.
And so remind me, like, our current non-resident students have been a big concern.
Our, our current non-resident students are our students. We are not, we are not consider, we are not considering them. We, we actually wrote that into A, B, C, C, um, before we passed that. There, and there's actually, um, we actually wrote it in, which, I mean, cause we felt like that that was right. And that's local control. Um, there's actually a bill that's working its way through the, the legislature right now that would actually say that. In law, in statute, so.
And those criteria that either bump them up or give them priority, I forget, did we determine those or did, was that in the state?
That, that's in the state statute, yeah, that's, that's primarily in the state statute. So that'll be what July one will, will take on. And then after July one, there will be the lottery, if we need to have a lottery. Uh, to determine who is accepted and who's not. And then after that lottery takes place, then, um, uh, app, uh, any applicant will receive a letter. Of acceptance or denial and, and the reason for the denial, yeah, at that point in time. Um, so, uh, as we were having our discussions today, um. You know, there, there are electronic lotteries, I, I don't know that we're gonna have a lot of this, but I just wanna talk through it. Um, my feeling is that, um, we'll have, I mean, we're, we want to see. Like a, like a, a fillable PDF on our website, um, paper applications. Um, applications, you know, specifically emailed to us in a, in a, in a PDF format. Um, as opposed to maybe some other, uh, electronic means that we might be able to, to do. Um, because I wanna be able to see the actual application. Um, you know, I did go ahead and include in your, in your board packet, um, some examples of the applications. And, and as I've read through those, our application will look very similar to, um, these two. But will be kind of a morph of both of them. Uh, there's some things I really like in one and some things I don't like in the other and, and really like about the other and don't like about the first. Um, you know, especially in some of the questioning. Um, we are also wanting to make sure it's very clear, um, that if a student has been suspended or expelled. That we do not have to take that student. Um, that is, that is, that is a new thing that is kinda been working through. Um, as, as everybody is working through this process, and so I want it to be very clear on our application. So if, if a parent chooses to say that this student is in good standing. And we find out whenever we request records that they've been expelled or, 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 um, suspended. We will then send them a letter saying, no, thank you, you need to go back to your home district. Um, so, so those are, those are some of the little specific tweaks that we're looking at in terms of this application. Um, and so all of this will pretty much take care of itself down here at the district office. Um, probably, um, um, probably an approval process at some point in time. At the, at the, uh, August board meeting of the new, um, non-resident students. And then there's still some gray and fuzzy area. What happens after June thirtieth? Do we continue to accept out of re- non-resident dis- non-resident students? And then what happens after September twentieth? Do we continue to take non-resident students? Cause at that point in time, we don't get any funding for those students after September twentieth. Um, so, so those are some considerations that, um, are being ironed out. And I will bring you, um, more recommendations and guidelines. The information that I provided to you in your board packet this month, it is highly recommended. That, that specifically the, um. The draft of district non-resident enrollment report, oh, that's not the one. The non-resident enrollment lottery guidelines and procedures. It has been highly recommended by both, um, service centers that we've been working with as well as K A S B. That this not be added into board policy. Um, because if it is added into board policy, then, um, it's not necessarily written for board policy. It's written for guidelines that can be adjusted and adapted as the procedure goes through. Um, because I guarantee you, there's going to be a strange one that's gonna happen. Maybe not for us, but we've already, I mean, there's, you know, there's a hundred different scenarios. That have been brought up at, at different, um, different meetings that we've been at, so. Um, you know, we would like to maybe call this a policy, but I would continue to ask you to call it as a, a guideline and, and procedures. As we move forward with that, so. That's a lot, and I did try to keep it short. Questions?
Um, if I could, on the lottery guidelines and procedures under the digital random lottery options. If I could, for protection of personal information with these online services. If we would use some sort of a digital random lottery option, opt for a number assigned to the enrollment applicant versus somebody's.
I.
To be entered into those.
I kinda thought we would just draw names out of a hat instead of doing any digital anything. Um, if we ended up getting to a, a lottery, um, and, I mean, we can, we can video it. I mean, I'm not very photogenic, but we can video it and, and protect ourselves that way. But I, I'm still not crazy about any kind of electronic randomizer. Simply because I, I mean, I, I don't know a lot about it. Um, I can do more investigation into it, see if my comfort level gets better. But I, I would agree with you in terms of when the, when the applications come in, you know, they can all be assigned. you know, they can all be assigned a number, um, a non-identifiable number.
Yeah, I would highly suggest some sort of, if it's, if it's a truly randomized, and just in case the future, future action would choose some sort of electronic, I would never want to enter a student's personal information.
No, no, I would agree with that. I mean, we could, we could use the, I mean, probably lose, use the last four digits of a student's, um, state ID.
Is that related to their social?
No.
Okay.
There's no link at all.
Perfect.
Um, to that, so, but that, that number follows them from district to district if they choose to move districts.
I would also be uncomfortable with that then, because that's been traceable back to personal information.
Okay, we can, we can randomly assign numbers.
Oh, randomly assigned. Yeah, application number zero, zero, one, I mean, sorry, Trish, that's more work for you, but.
I mean, we'll, I mean, we'll probably just number them as we get them in, I mean, we'll just, you know, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and then just number them.
Yeah, that seems more protective of our students' information.
Okay, other questions? That's a good point. Thank you very much, Julia. There's lots there. Uh, if you have questions about this, as, as we go through this process, I mean, you know, uh, July one, I'm sure will be an interesting time.
We'll move on to item D, discussion of middle school gate admissions.
I'll just let you take over on this one.
All right, so looking ahead to next year's athletics, we worked, go ahead and add more events, especially in volleyball, um, adding more tries and A C team tournament. As we add more events to get these kids these experiences, obviously, so do costs rise. Um, right now, our officials' cost for next year is projected to be over ten thousand dollars. Uh, to kinda help curb those rising costs, I would like you guys to consider allowing gated admission for middle school events that are non-league contests. These would only be the events that are listed right here. I would want to go ahead and publicize it now and let people know well in advance that we'll still accept district passes, it's not so we can charge our own people, but looking at the schools that are on that list, they currently charge us to attend their events at their sites. This is to help with the budget side of it. As you can see, it'd be five volleyball dates, three basketball dates, and one wrestling date. Looking at schools in our league, about half of them currently charge gated admission for non-league contests, along with several schools in the surrounding area. My recommendation based off of what everyone around us is doing or is about to do, my, my thoughts were adults five dollars, students three. Go ahead and accept Hoysington activity passes, but not accept C K L passes, just because again, no other league school is accepting them when we go to their sites. Again, on league nights, so Thursday nights for volleyball or football, we're not gonna charge at those. These would be the Monday night tries that we host, or tournaments, the extra-large events that we, we hold. Just as a little bit of insight, when we hold one try, the average officials for that night is about six hundred dollars for one of those events. So, any, anything we can help to curb the growth in our expenses is helpful. Any questions?
Are the current schools charging also only for non-league events, or are they standard?
So, Ellsworth and their league, the N C double A, charges at everything. Uh, they are considering a five-dollar flat fee for every middle school league event starting next year. Um, otherwise, Larned is weekends only, and then the other ones are non-league competitions. Um, when discussing with our league last m- month, there is currently no bylaw against charging for league events, but nobody does it, nor do we want to do that to each other, so.
Did you consider other prices, or are you pretty just set?
I'm okay with con- consulting about anything, I mean, realistically, the bottom I've seen is three and two, uh, the top has been five and three. You know, I don't mind going right there in the middle at four and three, I, I don't even mind going to the bottom, I just, my thought process is, if we're sticking with the average of what other people are doing, that way, when they show up, when we go to Russell, they're charging the same that we're charging. When we go to Larned, they're charging five dollars, so are we, it becomes easier to understand what we're charging.
I mean, I'm fine with the price, just as long as we accept the activity process, but.
And I absolutely wanna do that, it's not about necessarily charging our own people more and more.
So you're looking at five and then three for the kids?
Yep, for K through twelve.
This one has two, just so you know.
Oh. He put my old PDF, sorry.
That'll just need to be changed to three, which is not a big deal. Any other questions?
Anybody good with that?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flowers.
Are you in a motion or anything for that?
Um, I don't, I don't know that we necessarily need a motion unless you want, unless you want to, to formalize it, or, but we don't have to.
All right, um, let's move on to item E then, District Local Option Budget Resolution.
Um, this came up, uh, relatively quickly, um, and was opened up, March one, um, has to be approved in the month of March, and I have to have it back to the state, um, March s- uh, twentieth. It's a resolution to, um, to basically continue our local option budget. And the local option budget is a percentage of our general fund, and the maximum that we can go to without having a petition is thirty-one point six percent. So, um, in the past, it's been thirty, and then as more schools have petitioned to move to thirty-three percent, the average has moved to thirty-one point six percent. Um, we have to, this is the great thing about, um, school budgets, we have to pass the resolution tonight, um, to go to a maximum of thirty-one point six percent. And then when we start building the budget in July, is when I will plug in that we have the option to go to a maximum of thirty-one point six percent. And then, then as we build the budget, um, we see where those mills are, and if we wanna go ahead and stay at that thirty-one point six percent, or if we wanna, if we wanna come down. So, um, we are matched at fifty percent from the state on our LOB. Um, so this is, I mean, so, for every dollar that is raised, um, with, within our district in, um, taxes, the state pitches in fifty cents, or a little over fifty cents, so. And then the local option budget is actually, um, uh, locally raised taxes. So, so it is, it is specifically to our district. So when, when those mill levies or when those, um, when that revenue neutral rate comes out, um, this is one of the funds that is actually, um, on the mil- on the revenue neutral, um, forms. So, just being a hundred percent, um, transparent about that. So, questions about that?
So that's gonna raise the taxes on the mill levy?
It won't raise, it won't raise them unless we change the mill levy. And typically, our mill levy on the LOB has actually gone down because valuations have gone up.
As long as they don't raise it up.
Other questions?
I'm going to approve the LOB resolution for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget as presented.
A second. I moved and seconded to approve the LOB resolution for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget as presented. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, move on to item nine, reports. We'll start with Mrs. Walker.
First.
Thank you.
A little bit longer. Can I go?
Yes, Sarah.
Yeah. Okay, um, go to you, first of all. Um, I wanna start out just by, um, giving, uh, Ms. Allison a shout-out, so this week is, um, Social Worker Week, so Ms. Allison has kind of, um, a unique title, she's our family care liaison. So we celebrate her, um, during, uh, Social Worker Week, so. Um, so, li- on Friday, our TK through first grade attended the Pinkalicious Musical, um, in Salina. It went really, really well, um, the kids, they, they, they liked it. Um, now, of course, if you have students with like some sensory, um, needs, that makes it a little bit difficult, because there's a lot going on. Um, but they did really, really well, so, um, I know that, um, Mrs. Kraft has already spoke with the lady, and they're planning on doing more of these, so we are getting on the list to hopefully be able to attend more of these, um, each year for our kiddos. Mrs. Kraft did a survey with the kids, um, and eighty-four, eighty-four percent of the kiddos gave a rating of four or better, so I think that's pretty good. So, um, you know, thank you to her for organizing all of this, also, thank you to all of the staff that went. It wouldn't have been possible with everybody working together and being a team about it, because that's a lot of littles to take to Salina to, to a musical, so. Um, our reading committee, we've been meeting, um, on Wednesdays after school, so, um, a couple of the other schools decided to go with new reading curriculums, we have decided not to. Um, so everything the state is pushing right now is, um, your curriculum needs to be geared towards and supported by the science of reading. So we've been going through what we use and the curriculum that we currently have, um, and really, I guess, comparing that to the science of reading. Um, we've discussed, um, some new phonics things, um, we are very devoted to Pathways, um, which is a wonderful phonics program, um, but we're also bringing in some other things, so. Um, we've discussed curriculum, the science of reading, we've discussed grouping. This Wednesday, we're gonna dive in and discuss scheduling, which is always, uh, very daunting, because there's just a lot of, um, a lot of groups, and we have to ma- make sure that we have enough people, uh, to fill those groups, so. Um, it's honestly been, um, we, we've done it just to, because we wanna know how we can best support a consistent reading instruction from pre-K all the way to first grade, so, um, they've been some really, really great meetings. Um, today, our first graders went and visited the Barton County Historical Museum, um, they loved it. So it was free for our kiddos, um, there was actually nobody out there, but, um, the managers of the museum, um, met our students out there and took them through, uh, they got to go through most of the buildings, but not all of them. Um, so this is a really great opportunity, because it went in line with, um, some curriculum they had already been discussing through social studies, so, um, it matched up really well, so. A great, a great adventure for them this morning. Um, also, the fifth grade came over this afternoon and read, um, Dr. Seuss books to our TK through first grade. It's always tough with our preschool, because we have AM and PM, so you don't wanna provide that to one and not to the other, so that's why we wait until they get in that TK, because they're all day, so thank you to, um, Mrs. Applegate. She worked with me and got that all organized, and, um, had it, we, we gave her groups, and she assigned all of them with a, with a fifth grader, and it worked really, really well, so that was fun for them today. Um, tomorrow, um, Jerry Esfield, uh, she will come out and discuss wheat with the first grade, and she talks about just all of the different things that wheat does, you know, um, for stuff, and she's, she's always great when she comes out. She's a lovely, lovely lady, so we enjoy having her in our school. Um, on Thursday, March seventh, we dismiss at noon, um, there's no preschool. Um, we have our student-led conferences for kindergarten and first grade from one o'clock to nine o'clock. Please bring your student, you, they'll need to be there, um, because they are student-led conferences. And please make sure you come at your scheduled time. If you're unsure of what that time is, uh, call Pam in the office, and we'll make sure that you, you have the right time on your calendar. Um, and then Friday, March eighth, we have no school. And then, March eleventh through the fifteenth, we have spring break. Already, I feel like it's approached very quickly, usually, it seems like January and February are very long months, but these have went by very quickly this year. Um, and then right away, when we return on March eighteenth, we have a HEPA meeting, um, at Roosevelt at six thirty, so. Any questions? No?
Just wondering if you're happy with the bingo night?
Um, it went really well, um, so yeah, they had the bingo event from three to five, um, they kind of, the, the big debacle was how much popcorn to pop, um, but they got it all figured out, um. Yeah, so Amber said it went really well for the first time, you know, it was such a nice day out that day too, so, um, kinda discussed maybe having it at a different point in the year, which you never know what the weather is gonna be like, but, yeah, so it went really well for them, yeah, so, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Flowers is standing in for Mrs. Kraft.
Hi, Lincoln was on the move in February to the tune of several activities. It was kicked off with a great success at the County Spelling Bee, where the two enti- two entries from Lincoln Elementary took third and fourth, behind two students from Hoysington Middle School, meaning Hoysington students swept the bee this year. Uh, congratulations to all Hoysington students. Fifth grade had the pleasure of attending the Shrine Circus in Salina, Kansas. Prior to the circus, they were invited to the shrine temple there in Salina, where they received lunch for free provided by the, uh, Great Bend and Hoysington Shriners. So thank you to them for the experience, along with, they gave each student ten dollars, so they could get either a souvenir or a snack while they were at the circus. So amazing experience for our students. On top of that, thank you to the teachers who took the time, especially because it did get them home late on a Friday night. So, awesome opportunity. Uh, staff had the opportunity to attend professional development in Lyons this year, where they got the opportunity to meet and hear from Gary Brooks, who gave an awesome presentation, left many teachers mentioning concepts that he discussed. On top of this, they had several meetings throughout the day to help develop themselves within their own teaching groups. Uh, Lincoln staff had a co-care night on the twelfth, which allowed the staff time to work together and have discussions. Uh, this event was led by our fourth grade teachers, uh, so thank you to them for scheduling and planning that. Lincoln students last week got to hear from a author, Judy Young, through a virtual online experience for an hour. Uh, there were two different days, that were, there were different age groups. Um, they got to hear about the author's way of becoming an author, what it took for her to do what she does, and then ask questions of the author as well. So it was, it was a great opportunity for them just to be exposed to something different. Student-led conferences are this week on Thursday, just like Ms., uh, Walker said, please make sure your student is there, if you don't know your time, please reach out to the office, and they can let you know. We're looking forward to having all the parents coming in and having their students share their work with them. This is a great opportunity for the students to own their own learning and efforts. Um, and then Lincoln flower sales kicked off today, packets are sent home with students. Please visit with a Lincoln student in order to purchase flowers for the spring. Students will have the month of March to do their sales, and then pickups will come at the end of April. Flowers will be paid for when they are picked up. If anyone doesn't have a student to purchase from, they may call the Lincoln office.
You wanna go ahead and do this?
Yes. We're gonna do mine as well. So Scholars Bowl finished up their season tonight at Ellsworth. They have worked hard, and we've seen improvement each competition. Uh, last week, they, uh, ended up winning six rounds, I believe, for the seventh grade and several rounds for the eighth grade. So it's, it's been a lot of growth this season. Wrestling finished up last Thursday at the league tournament with a great showing by both the boys and girls. This was capped off- This was capped off by the girls getting their back-to-back league championships. Boys finished fifth out of ten, but that's very skewed by the fact that we only had twelve boys finish out the season due to injuries. And out of those twelve boys, we ended up with four champions and then three other medalists. So majority of them meddling. Robotics, this group continued their success the past few years, qualifying seven of their eight total teams to the state tournament this past weekend. And when they were at states, all seven of them made it to the finals, which only allows twelve teams in the finals. We had two teams finish tied for first, two teams finish tied for second. And then we had one team garner the excellence award, which gives them the sole spot to go to Worlds this year in Dallas, Texas. So we will get the opportunity to be represented once again at Worlds. Some upcoming events for this month, obviously today at Ellsworth. Tomorrow, our vocal and band will be competing at Larned in both ensembles and small groups. And then tennis will have their first two competitions this month towards the end at Ellsworth and Great Bend. Athletes of the Month for January, I know I did mention it, but I'm going to go and say it again. Ava Martin and Cooper Moore in the sport of wrestling. And then February, Sam Does and Brylee Bash, also in the sport of wrestling. Vocal students will be competing and band students in ensembles tomorrow. And then track and tennis have both started. Tennis, as I got told today, is about thirty-five participants. And then track, we're right around thirty-five to forty participants as well. So looking to be a fun spring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bunker.
Good evening, everybody. As they've all mentioned, our SLCs are tomorrow, if anybody didn't know that.
Not tomorrow.
Thursday, see? Already messed it up. We have everybody confused. SLCs are Thursday. It's posted on our website. We sent, we sent times home, slip of paper with our students with the time that they, that they're supposed to have it. We also had them get their phones, bring them in the homerooms, text their parents. So they had that. And then if there's any, if you have any questions or still don't know, feel free to call the office and the office ladies will tell you what time it is.
They're supposed to text us?
They were. They were. One wasn't there, was she? So, yeah, so they, and if they had a sub, they may not have gotten around to. So if they haven't, I'll make sure they remind them tomorrow. Just trying to get as many opportunities to get that information home as possible. Sometimes it slips the papers, don't make it either. So as Nick stated, we got league music and band tomorrow. Seventh and eighth grade will go, they'll compete as a group, solos and ensembles, all kinds of things there. Been started, started to work on our schedule for twenty-four, twenty-five, and we're looking at going to a seven-hour day that'll allow us more flexibility with our MTSS groups for our title people to work with, with our lower kids and also give our other teachers an opportunity to work with our higher-level kids in some enrichment activities. If we look at or talk to our, to my title people, they, we do a really good job working with our, with our lower kids, getting them up, but we don't do, don't do enough or as much as we could for our higher-level kids. So we're going to look at trying to get some more activities and things to challenge them as well. Spring pictures will be March twenty-seventh. We'll also do our winter and sports pictures at that time. And then, you know, getting geared up for state assessments, which we'll do reading and math on April eighth and then science on the sixteenth and seventeenth of April. And then our eighth grade promotion to get that, that information out there will be May tenth at seven. We'll have an award ceremony for sixth and seventh grade at the last week of school and we'll finalize that date at our next BLT meeting. So. That's about all I have for my report. Does anybody have any questions on the report or anything else that may have been said tonight? So if I can clarify on the schedule issue that was talked about earlier. When I took over as principal, band was offered at the same time as art and computers, which were the only electives for the sixth grade. It was offered the same hour long with the fundamentals classes. We all, we all recognized that was a problem. So our current schedule does not have that. Our current schedule, those art, computers and STEM are all different hours. So there is no competing classes at this time. Just so, and just wanted everybody to understand that that's, that's where we're at now. Because, and because of that, because we had that when we first, when we started and we changed that, there were kids that were in band this year that weren't in as sixth graders, but they were as fifth graders. So there was, they were out a year because they were in those fundamentals classes. There was no choice. So does that make sense? So, and, and just, you know, the marching issue was our kids needed to be up there when, during the seminar time, I believe, is that correct, Joel? So they had to go up there and they had to leave fifteen minutes before their scheduled band time. So the reason for the email was to communicate with those other teachers and make sure there wasn't a test or something important that they were doing in class, you know, so they could make it up or they wouldn't miss it, something like that. It wasn't to not let them go. It was just communication so everybody was on the same page. And then, you know, getting shuttles when we're shuttling to the high school, to the activity center back here, you know, it takes some coordination. So, you know, that, you know, I don't know if that was clear, clearly stated earlier. So just wanted to make sure all those things were clear. If you have any questions on that, I'm more than happy to answer those. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mason?
I'll leave you guys out. Excuse me, a fact sheet on graduation requirements.
Your agenda might be printed off as well.
Thank you. This graduation requirement has been kind of an ongoing change in the document, as you would guess, given the state's involvement. So we'll get to that here in a minute that I just handed out. But I'll start with the basics of the graduation requirement changes. And again, this is for this year's eighth grade class. Alright, so as they come in as freshmen next year, all these changes apply to them. So starting off with communications, language arts. As of right now, the state has a mandate of four, four years of language arts. Okay? The state's going down to three and a half. They are also adding the half communications credit, which we have always had. Okay, so we've, in our English department, we've always required four and a half credits. The four years of regular language arts classes and then the half credit of speech, debate, forensics. So we've actually been ahead of the game there. So we're fine there. I would actually prefer to keep it at four instead of the three and a half, especially for those college-bound kids. If you read underneath there, as administrator, I can waive up to one unit of language arts if I feel like a kid would benefit better in a different area. So I reserve that right if that comes up. Societies and humanities, nothing has changed here for us. Three units of history and government. So we have all of our sophomores take world history, all of our juniors take US history, all of our seniors take government with constitution lessons involved in there. So we're right where we need to be there already. And then the half, or sorry, the full credit of the fine arts, which would be band, vocal arts. We're already doing that, nothing's changed there. Move on to the STEM. That's just science, technology and math. Nothing changed on the math side. Still three full units of math is required, two of those being algebra and geometry. Have to have those. Three units of science, again, we're still, we're doing this already. One has to be physical, one has to be biology, and then earth and space. And then at least one unit of laboratory course. We do do laboratory stuff in earth and space and also in biology. Okay, so we're covered there. The one kind of change on this is the one unit of STEM elective, which could be a computer science, an advanced math, advanced science, robotics, advanced technology, et cetera. Notice how it said et cetera there. Really, it's, it's local control on, on this credit here. The advanced CTE course, I found out last Thursday on a Zoom meeting that they've taken that out now. Okay, so we have our CTE pathways and each pathway has an application class, which is like the, the third-tier class. Originally, they're going to allow us to use that application class as the STEM credit. But as of last week, they took that out. Okay, so I mean, a kid to go back in, I don't know. And then the last part would be the employability and life skills, which is basically the phys ed. Currently, one full credit of phys ed is required with health being embedded into it. That's changing for this incoming freshman class. They are now requiring at least one half-credit of PE, but I would like to have our district still require the full credit. I feel like that, that physical education is very important for our kids. So we will keep that as at one full there. The half-credit of health has to be a standalone class now. Okay, in the past, we have just kind of embedded health into our PE one classes. Can't do that anymore. That has to be a standalone. It has to be transcribed separately on their, on their transcripts. Okay, so we're working towards getting that work into our, into our schedule. And then the half-credit of financial literacy is also a new one. Currently, our district, we require all students to take business essentials. So what we're going to do is we're going to take that business, business essentials requirement out and replace it with the financial literacy. Currently, our freshmen all take business essentials, but we feel like we're going to start offering financial literacy at the junior year. So either juniors or seniors will take it. Feel like they're, we want them to be a little bit older and more mature to really understand financial literacy. And then lastly, the four and a half units of elective courses, driven by their IPS planning, which is their individual plans of study. That's another part of KISA and also part of this new graduation requirements. Each kid has to have an IPS, which we do, but we need to tweak it a little bit more as we move forward. Currently, the four and a half is what the state is, but we've also, we have always required five and a half of electives. And I feel like we still need to do that because we have eight periods in a day. So there's plenty of time for these kids to get their five and a half credits of electives. So I'd like to keep it at that. Okay, now real quick to that sheet I just gave you guys. On the bottom, I put an X by the post-secondary asset list. Okay, this is also a new piece to the requirement of graduation. So basically, if you read the first sentence, it says, these items listed below are official at this time. Again, it's probably going to change. But basically, each kid, starting with this year's eighth graders, have to have at least two of these assets in order to graduate high school. Have to have at least two. Okay, so if you look through there, if they have forty or more community service hours, that would count as one. Workplace learning experience directly related to their IPS, we do that with a lot of our kids already. That could be one. Scoring a twenty-one on the ACT, we give work keys to all of our juniors. So they have a chance to take it. So if they score silver or higher on that, that would be one. Nine-plus college hours, a lot of our seniors graduate high school with more than nine hours of, of college courses. Scoring a three or better on the state assessments. Moving over to the right column, we also offer the ASVAB test. So if a kid takes it, that would require, that would suffice that. Being involved with two or more extracurricular activities would be one. Ninety percent attendance in high school. So of this list here, each, each graduate has to have at least two of those. Okay? And you don't have this in your document, but it does say in here that by 2028, the longitudinal data system will have been rolled out and will allow for us to track the assets and place it on their transcripts. Okay, so we will still, we, this, there, when they meet these two post-secondary assets, it will show up on their transcripts.
And we're already exploring how we can do that within Power School.
Okay. Okay. And then lastly, on there, back to the STEM, the computer science class. Per the graduation requirements, each school has to offer at least one course that would be considered as a computer science class. We currently already offer three. So that would be, on the right sheet here, graphic design. We offer that within our art program with Mrs. Lamro, then also in the computer program with Mrs. Steiner. So we actually offer two opportunities for kids to get graphic design there. We offer computer graphics. We don't call it that, but we, we have graphic design and then also robotics. Okay, so kids don't have to take these. We have to offer at least one computer science class. We already offer three. So when they started rolling this out last year, I was, when you hear computer science, you think it's, you know, coding. Where can I find someone that could teach that? But we offer three courses already that's, are sufficient for this, so.
Can I copy some of those to put in their folders?
Yeah, absolutely. So that's just a quick, quick update on graduation requirements. And again, we will probably have some changes over the next month or so. But by the end of school year, April, late at the very latest, I will have a document for you guys to officially approve for our graduation requirements. Okay? Any questions on that? Nope? Okay, then a few other items. We do have our career day planned, ready to go for this Thursday, the seventh. That will be from nine to eleven-ten. So basically, each student had to choose three careers. We have twenty-two different presenters coming in. Each student was sent a Google form from Mrs. Randolph that they had select three of those. So each, and we're going to put those presenters into different classrooms. Each kid has to go to three forty-minute presentations. So we're looking forward to that. We did that a couple of years ago and it was very successful, so. Also, hopefully you guys got your invitations in the mail for the Board of Education Senior Banquet, right? Which would be the Monday we come back from spring break, Monday, March eighteenth, starting at six-thirty in the high school cafeteria. Also, last month, we talked about, Mr. Kraft, Mr. Kraus and I went out to Barton and met with some folks out there about their early college experience program, where we can get kids out there in the afternoons to start working on licensures and welding. There's four areas, scale tech, carpentry, plumbing. We have a meeting on the Tuesday, March nineteenth at six-thirty. We'll start in the high school auditorium. We're going to invite all of our high school students and their parents to come to it. We'll start with the general assembly in the auditorium and then break out into different classrooms with specific areas of study for that. So we're looking at rolling that out for next year. Pretty excited about that opportunity. Through the United Way, our seniors will attend a real-world session on March twenty-second from eight to noon in the morning, eight in the morning till noon. Basically, that's just kind of getting them ready for the next step. Talking about, you know, how to pay bills, dorm, you know, living on your own, just the stuff that we don't really do a great job in school of teaching that these kids need to know about when they get out and about. So that's put on by the United Way. Mr. Lewis will be taking our Zero Reasons Why group to Topeka on March twenty-sixth. And then lastly, FCA, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. That's a program that's out there. We, we used to have it in the high school. It kind of went away, but Roland Broder and Denny Lewis would like to get that started again in our school. So it doesn't, it doesn't need board approval or anything, but basically that's, they'll be meeting before school hours in the auditorium, probably on a weekly basis, just with, you know, Fellowship of Christian Athletes. So I'm really excited about that coming back in. Any questions?
We're talking about going up to college for the kids, getting their, like welding and all that sort of. You thought about the EMT licensure? Because we had a couple of kids in my last class from high school from Great Bend.
Okay, anything they offer out there, we're open to. That wasn't one that they had brought up to us, but yeah, I mean, the more the merrier.
Something they could use throughout their entire life.
Yep. The post-secondary asset list, having a certification was one of those that could beat that, so. Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a while since I've sat here.
Yeah.
I think I'm gone every Monday to some activity or between high school or my middle school son's. As you guys know, we just, we finished up winter sports on, on Saturday. Wrestling team finished up about a week and a half ago at State. Wrestling team finished up about a week and a half ago at State. I know Tracy was there. It was, it was an ordeal. Three classifications, all at one place. It, if you're claustrophobic, you would not have enjoyed being there at all. I mean, it was packed. Our kids did really well. We took four girls, all four placed. We took nine boys, two of them placed with Josiah Ball bringing home a state championship, which was really exciting. You know, I want to thank all the people that showed up. Man, we filled a section. We had a lot of people there. We had a lot of students show up on Friday and Saturday, so that was great to see. You know, on top of that, our boys were regional champions at their regional. Coach Mortis Stern was honored by the rest of the regional coaches as Regional Coach of the Year for our regional. So that was exciting. You know, I felt like wrestling had a great year. Obviously, the kids would argue with me that they felt like they probably could have done a little bit better, but you know, I, I feel like we were all proud of them. They did a great job. Basketball team's finished up, like I said, substate on our home court, both of them losing in the semifinals. In great games. If you guys were there, they were fun to watch. It was, kids played hard and left it all out there. So like I said, another great winter sports season. You know, I want to thank all of our workers. We got a great compliment from the basketball officials at substate. They complimented our table workers. Said they do an outstanding job, which I hundred percent agree. We have, we have great people that help us. Makes my job easier. They show up and I don't have to worry about it. So, you know, I want to make sure those people know that we appreciate them. So, spring sports just getting started up. I don't have numbers for you. Like I said, basketball wrestling just got over with, so some of them haven't even started practices yet. So we don't know for sure what all of our, our numbers are rock solid, but you know, talking to the coaches, it looks like we'll, we'll have a lot of kids participating again this spring. As far as activities, forensics, they're, they're off and running hot and heavy. They've had several meets already. They've got their first home meet of two coming up on the twenty-third. I'm sure Coach Reisner's going to be asking for help. If you guys are forensics people, well, I mean, shoot him an email and let him know you're willing to help. Dance team has tryouts later this month, and then Cheer will have theirs next month. So short nutshell, that's what we got going on in the activities world. Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you.
Mr. Kraus?
All right, kind of to, you know, bounce off of Mr. Kraft, I will, Mr. Reisner did send out an email to all the staff, and I can forward that email. If you are interested in helping judge, he did break it out by rounds, so you're not stuck there all day. You can pick and choose if you, if you do have some availability. So it's always a fun time. I saw some incredible things last year. It's amazing to think that some of those kids will come into a, to the shop and perform, just like they do in a classroom. So it's always great to see them perform. So I met with our counselors and family liaison ladies from each of the building. You know, some of the things that they have going on is pretty incredible, including Allison at Roosevelt is starting the process of putting together a care portal that would benefit, you know, basically anybody in the entire community of Hoyington. So they have some great aspirations. You know, as you came in, you probably saw the basket there where the dispatch has kind of partnered with the schools to supply care items as well as snacks and different things that, that have been requested, and the community has done a good job of supporting that as well. Purple Wave, we have, finally have Purple Wave here to put some things on. If you haven't got onto Purple Wave, please do so. We do have our John Deere Gator on there, as well as two pushmowers. And then it says electronics, but it's much, much more than electronics. It does include some of our old outdated electronics, but it also includes the soundboard, which is, I mean, Dawn's been trying to get us to sell that since I got here, but it is a working soundboard, has several channels on that, commercial gas stove, and then many pieces of office furniture. So that one hasn't taken off quite as well as I would hope, but it is a very large lot as well that includes a whole bunch of different stuff. So I did send all of that information out to the staff and community members to make sure that they're aware of that as well. We picked up the new Ranger for use at the football field and track just, just today. They did disengage the four-wheel drive, so it will not void any warranties on our, on our football field. And Tyler is getting it ready so that we can use our groomer up there as well. We do have some things that we're discovering with the track and the discus areas. So we're working with ATG to get those corrected either this spring or next summer. So we are taking care of that. We are also having Ray Christians come up and work on concrete barriers around our shot put area, as well as working with the brick plant for a fill, to fill those shot put areas. And so that's kind of been a dream and an idea that we've been working on actually for, since I got here, so that we're not throwing our shot puts on asphalt because the asphalt was not removed from the old garage that used to sit there. Another positive shout-out to the brick plant. They have reached out to ABCC and Great Bend Economic Development for the donation of all of the brick for the Hoyington daycare facility. So I do want to make sure that they do receive the credit where credit is due. And then finally, tomorrow evening, seven o'clock, I hope to have a meeting with some of the community members for a planning for Bike Across Kansas. June tenth, we'll be hosting Bike Across Kansas. We'll have somewhere in the neighborhood of a thousand to fifteen-hundred people come through the community, and we'll have, we'll host that out at the Activities Center and within the entire community of Hoyington. So it'll be, it'll be a joint effort. And so I've invited Chamber, City, and other entities to see if there's other people that want to be involved with that process as well. So, and then the last thing, March twenty-fifth, we've, we've had some discussion about having that evening as our kind of refresher for boardmanship. That date worked for Russell Miller, but he received a jury notice just recently. And so, you know, do we want to look at a different date for him, or do you want me to go after somebody else to present on March twenty-fifth? Because that was the date that kind of worked for everybody. So that, that'll be a discussion item that we'll have, and we can have some correspondence with that as, as time goes on. So, so we want to try to make that happen as soon as possible as well. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Any board member reports? You've got nothing.
Nothing here.
Legislative report?
I honestly do not have anything off the top of my head. I would encourage you to read the KSB, you know, emails that do come out. They tend to be the most up-to-date. Leah Thomas, the KSB representative, actually in the, in the State House. She does a nightly Facebook Live, as well as a podcast on Friday evenings. This has been an interesting legislative session in the fact that it's not, it's not been as ram-rodded as other legislative sessions have been in the past. And so, so it's, it's kind of got a different feel to it. One of the, one of the big things right now is in the Senate, there's a lot of, there's a lot of movement in special ed funding. So, you know, keep an eye on that, and I'll have some updates on special ed funding specific to us, you know, this week as well. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item ten, consideration of district personnel. I move we go into executive session for, I think, twenty minutes? We'll try twenty minutes to start pursuant to discussing non-elective personnel under KO and A exception for the purpose of discussing nominations, resignations, and administrative contracts with Mr. Kraus present. The open meeting will resume in the boardroom at, we'll just say nine-thirty.
Second.
It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Yes.
Passes six-zero. The series is gone now.
Yep.
All right.
Do you want any administration to stick around for the nominations?
And I have, I'll give Trish that, the, this.
All right, coming out of executive session with the following. I move to accept the resignation of Patricia Evans from Food Service Director as presented. I second. It's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
I move to accept the nomination of Bruce Cooper for the position of Head Boys Golf Coach as presented.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Six-zero. I move to accept the nomination of Chris Kinman for the position of Assistant Boys Golf Coach as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Six-zero. I move to accept the, oh, never mind. I move to accept the nomination of Kristy Berngart for the position of High School Art Teacher as presented.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Six-zero. And I move to accept the nomination of Dewan Thompson for the position of Middle School Art Teacher as presented.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Passes six-zero. All right. Do I have a?
I don't have a motion for that.
All right. I move to extend the administrative contracts through 2026 for all administrators.
Yep.
Is that all I need?
Yep.
Okay, do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, passes six-zero. And I just want to take a minute to explain to you guys. Thank you for your patience on this. Please know that it is not the individual that the board has kind of decided. It's the process. We do not like the evaluation process. So moving forward, it is going to be our goal to work with Mr. Kraus to try to come up with a better way to do this, and just help make things go more smoothly and efficiently. And just, we want Hoyington to be the district that people want to come to. And I know we've kind of gotten away from that a little bit, so just be patient. We'll work together. We'll get it there. Okay, but please know that the board never had anything with any of you individually. It was just trying to come up with the process and how do we fix it. Okay, so thank you all. And I believe that's it?
No, move to adjourn.
All right. Motion to adjourn, seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Are you ready for bed?